This is Kim DeBozier, co-chair of the Tampa Bay Chamber's Policy Council. I want to thank and welcome the viewers tuning into our 2020 Virtual Candidate Forum Series. The Tampa Bay Chamber focuses on policy, not politics. And while we do not endorse, we want to make sure that our members and the business community are informed on where candidates stand on issues that are important to business. Today, we're excited to have candidates for Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, District Four with us. So I would like to welcome Christina Fitzpatrick, Gary Bradford, and Russell Jeff Miller. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
So we're going to get right into it. We are just six short weeks away from Election Day. Can you each give us a brief, 60 seconds or less, update on your campaign? And what message you want to deliver to voters in this final stretch? And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. My name's Christina Fitzpatrick, and I'm running for District Four County Commissioner. I take care of my three kids and my mother with MS. I've been a Pasco County resident for over 33 years, and I treasure family values. I'm dedicated to work hard, respond efficiently, and improve the quality of life of all the Pasco residents. I've lived, worked, and started my businesses and nonprofits, guardian angels, and miracle schools right here in Pasco. My platform consists of family values, transportation, economic growth, homelessness, addiction, mental health flooding, public safety, and public safety. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bradford.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Gary Bradford. I'm a candidate for the Pasco County Commission. My career and my emphasis on this campaign is public safety, the economy, business, fiscal conservatism, and creating an environment in which Pasco County can go to the next level. That takes in a lot of different issues, too numerous to mention here. All of them require a checkbook by the county, well, tax dollars. So I'm very much a fiscal conservative when it comes to tax dollars. However, I think we need to spend those wisely and efficiently as we tackle the problems that's going to be right here in front of us now and in the future. Some of the opportunities that we have right now is the growth management area of our county, and this list would give tremendous growth. You have to take into account the infrastructure, schools, the environment, public safety, healthcare, accessibility, and you must have a balanced and reasonable approach to growth. Pasco County cannot be a bedroom community anymore for Hillsborough County. The number keeps steadily going down, but right now, according to the Pasco Economic Development Council, you can see 52% of the people who live in Pasco work in Hillsborough and other places. We have to change that. We need them to spend their tax dollars in Pasco and not in Hillsborough. Thank you for the opportunity to start.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, first of all, for inviting me here today. I've lived here in West Pasco for 46 years. Started off in Arapica, which is in District Five, and then moved here to District Four when I was about 19. Spent my life here. My friends are here, my family, my grandkids, they're, you know, everybody's here. I had a lot of motivation here to make Pasco even better than what it is and to try to work on issues that we were facing. And in the time here, I've raised four kids, got them through either college, three of them through college, and one through a trade school. And I'm a business owner. I'm a general contractor. I do remodeling. We have about 21 employees and give or take on given any given day. But I'd like to bring my experience in running a small business and to help with economic development, especially in light of the recent events with COVID-19, where we have a multitude of new issues that we have to overcome on so many levels. It's kind of like a mind-boggling thing, but I think that I think we're up for the challenge and that we can help small businesses grow and startups get going and build that economic base that we need. Thank you.
Great, well, that's a great segue, actually, into our first topic, which is jobs. How can county government use its authority and its resources to direct job growth? And we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Bradford this time.
Thank you for that question. I think there's three things that the county commission can do, not only for job growth in the future, but also for the businesses and the people who are living in Pasco right now. I think you have to provide, in some degree, because of COVID-19, the challenges that we've had, access to capital. Depending upon the amount depends upon the factors that we can evolve in to raise that kind of money, to reprioritize within the budget, to see if we can find some liquidity to help these businesses through a tough spot that they're having. Second thing is the workforce. Who's going to show up and go to work? It's kind of hard to tell an employee to come to work when they're worried about COVID-19 catching a disease, taking it back to the family, and possibly a death resulting in that exposure. So we have to, we have to work around and come up with innovative ideas, like we're doing right now, Zooming, for workplace development and how we get our employees to work. It's okay to do Zoom meetings, maybe if you're in an office setting, insurance and things like that. The challenges we're going to have that I think that are here are manufacturing, an electrician, a plumber, kind of hard to do an electrical wire house during a Zoom meeting. So that's, that's a challenge that we have on that end of the spectrum. And I think the third thing is businesses and people in general who want to open businesses, they have a need for certainty. How the county government has behaved, what is their priorities, you need to send a clear message that Pasco County is open for business during COVID-19, and these are the tools that we have in the toolbox to assist you with COVID-19. I also think that we have to leverage our relationships with the state and federal government to acquire as much capital as we can. If I recall, I don't remember the exact date, so I'm not going to say, but within a couple of weeks, I saw Hillsborough County found $125 million, I believe that was the number, to make accessible to businesses. We should be doing that in Pasco. We certainly should be doing that in District Four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Miller, how do you think county government can use its authority and resources to direct job growth?
Well, I think the engine of any community is going to be small business. And so for the small business and the startup business, the self-employed individuals that are out there, the first thing that we can do is we can help eliminate, or at least relax, some of the codes and code enforcement that we have currently that prevents small businesses in residential communities. At least while we're fighting through this, the COVID-19, and you know, this could happen again, but having a plan in place to allow a hairdresser to maybe cut hair in her house in a room that she may have, as long as parking doesn't become an issue, of course, and you know, things would have to be scheduled, but not much different than what we're doing now, but in some cases. But I think that opening those doors up and that opportunity will help with startups and small businesses getting their feet off the ground before they can even afford to go out and maybe, you know, get in a place where they can afford to rent a facility. Also, I'd like to put together task forces within the permitting department and zoning where, when a new business wants to start up, that they can quickly get permits approved. If we can get all of the key players in the room at the same time, we're going to be able to expedite the permit. If there's issues, the engineer's going to be there, they can address the specific issues that are on that permit, and we can quickly get somebody into a place where, you know, now it's taking two or three months if you have a change of use. It'll take a couple of months to get a permit through to get your changes, and then it works its way through the departments. And by that time, a small business can be out of business or effectively broke because there's no income coming in. And I think that if we can do that, it would help business immensely. Am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to move on. We're going to move on to Ms. Fitzpatrick. Job growth.
Sorry, I did mute myself. Okay, thank you. Talking about job growth, I think it's really important to bring new businesses to Pasco County, and then we can match people to those new jobs. We also have the Career Source. If we can get people into Career Source, we can mash them into the jobs tailored specifically to their needs. So if they are the electrician, or they can take the aptitude test, they figure out what is a job that they can do in the workforce, such I know as the Lighthouse has teamed up with vocational rehabilitation and gotten them to be able to do jobs in the community. So a lot of place matching for them. Again, we have K-Tech where they're learning specialized jobs, such as plumbing and electrician and everything like that. So it's really important to make sure the students growing up are learning the proper tools and the job skills that they are need to enter the workforce. So just continuing making the jobs available to new businesses, have more new employees and things like that. They also help.
No, go ahead. Finish your thought.
I was saying, they did have the grant, they have the PPP that can help business owners continue and keep their employees so they are not laid off during this COVID time. So if they can take advantage of the PPP loans and the county loans, then that can keep the employees employed as long as possible to get them over that hump so they can continue on with a job and not have to file for unemployment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's pivot to home rule. Local governments across the state have been critical of the legislature in recent years, suggesting that there is a Tallahassee knows best mentality that is threatening home rule. First, do you agree this is the case? And if so, how would you, as a county commissioner, work to establish a productive relationship with our legislative delegation? And if you don't agree that it's the case, then how do you explain some of the legislation filed in recent years that handicaps local governments? Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Miller.
All right, well, this is a subject that I'm rather new to, but I'm going to take a swing at this here. I'm, obviously, I'm a Republican, and I am running as a, and I have libertarian beliefs. So home rule to me is really important that we keep the state out. And I think that when it takes us years to get a permit because we have a drainage issue going on, that the state is a little bit too mixed up in some of the local affairs and should not take that long. So I think the best way we're going to have of getting this is we're going to need to go to our representatives and try to, at least if we, we could get our reps to make the changes that we need in a direction of specific tasks. If we can do them one at a time, small, that's how they've kind of taken this, this home rule away from us, is one piece at a time. I think we're going to have to get it back the same way.
All right, thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick, what do you think about home rule?
I want to be a little unfamiliar as well. I think as long as somebody wants to get a job, they can go out there and they can, I know it's very difficult due to COVID, but if they want to go out there and find a job, as long as they set their mind to it, they can. And there are many resources that we can help them, a job in our community, as well as, I know when I had to pull permits and permits had to get pulled for septic tanks and things like that, it normally does take three to four weeks, or as Jeff may have said, a couple of months, sorry. So making sure that there is a smooth transition, there is transparent, we can go right online, we can see the permits being pulled, we can know as soon as they're done and have a quicker pace. But just making sure our local businesses continue with their local businesses, and we can continue to work at a state, at a local level, and we're not governed as much by Tallahassee. I think as long as the mom and pop stores continue working, besides COVID and the new rules that are being implemented due to COVID and the maximum capacities, as long as they start their businesses, they can continue their businesses. And there isn't as much restrictions from Tallahassee normally.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Bradford, what is your thought on the home rule in the state legislature?
Home rule in the state legislature is the mechanism that they use for unintended consequences for home rule. It always has unintended consequences. It also is the mechanism they use when the state legislature wants to push the burden of responsibility, usually in the form of taxes or budget cuts, down to the local level. Every time they do that, and I strongly believe that when you're elected to hold office whether you're a state senator or state rep or a county commissioner, in this case, that you have to make decisions. Those decisions are called leadership, and you have to be responsible for those decisions that you make to the voters at the ballot box. Home rule, I think, is one of those principles that enshrines responsibility. Now, in the state legislature, as you know, a state senator will serve for eight years, a state rep will, say, serve for eight years. They're term limited out, they go back and forth between the two, 16 years they're done. Pasco County does not have term limits. I think that throws another political consideration into home rule. The other thing that really disturbs me about home rule is we have to take advantage of it if it's in our best interest. And when I say disturbs me, if you're not taking advantage of the relationships, then you're just not doing your job. Right now, as everyone knows, that the next Senate president is from Pasco County, the next Speaker of the House, Chris Brown, from Pasco County. I happen to know those two. I happen to know every single member of the Pasco County delegation, Senator, Representative Zika, et cetera, I won't name them all. And I have a relationship with them through the particular job that I have now. You have to leverage those relationships. The money is going to go somewhere, and it's our job to get the money in Pasco County. And if you don't do that, then you're just not doing your job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now, of all the issues confronting Pasco County, which single issue is most important to you and why? And what would you do about it if you were elected? Let's start with Ms. Fitzpatrick.
I think family values is very important, and it all stems from family values, such as public safety, mental health, the drug addiction, and everything that we have here. If we can target the baseline and help these children grow from a bottom level and raise up, then maybe they won't have the mental health issues that they see the parents having. And then the homeless issues that we have, I think it's really important that we do reach out to our officials. And I've sat with elected officials before, and we discussed, such as the Marchman Act and the Baker Act, we've made sure we've added the, they added the Marchman Act to the clerk of court website to make sure that the families can fill out the paperwork at an ease so they can get their loved ones the help that they need. So I do feel that we can reach out to our local officials and our elected officials in Tallahassee. I don't like to take no for an answer. So if we, whoever we need to reach out to, we reach out to them, we get the job done so we can help our children, all the way to our elderly in this area. It's also important that our elderly can live as independently and as long as possible in their homes. And again, that all trickles back down to the family values. So it's very important, again, we raise our kids with the family values, with the memories, and we can instill the morally, ethically proper values in our children. We can do more for them, and we can provide more programs for them. We can make sure they have more opportunities for after-school programs. If they cannot afford it, we can help them and have sliding scales or have more nonprofits that can help them do the activities that they can do as a family, whether they're playing warts. Teaching them dedication and hard work will pay off in the end, but they have, if they do an activity or a sport, they work hard, they see the people above them work hard, and then they have someone to look up to. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bradford, which single issue is most important to you?
Well, I think it has to be the economy. It affects everything that we do in life. Right now, as you know, and everybody knows, we're on a tight rope on COVID-19. As restrictions are ramped up in some areas or reduced in some areas, they have consequences. And I'm not going to get into the political nature of those decisions because that's not what we're here for. But I can tell you this, when the economy shuts down, like it has done in Florida, none of us win. Banks, excuse me, businesses close, people's houses are foreclosed on, they can't pay the rent, the governor has to step in and put a moratorium on that. Banks come to you and say, hey, we know you can't make your card payment, so we're going to give you three months. It is definitely the economy because that's what drives the engine in America. We are a capitalist society. You cannot take care of your family, you cannot take care of government needs, children, homelessness, and all the issues that everybody cares about unless you have not only economic development, but economic stability. That's the challenge I think every elected official right now should be focusing on.
Good, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Miller, what single issue is most important to you? Why? And what would you do about it?
Well, I think that it's, kind of goes hand in hand with Pasco County, where we have a, we have a growth rate that's shooting up, and we have budgets that are dropping due to our inability to collect some of the taxes that we are accustomed to collecting with this COVID-19 shutdown, if you will, of businesses, or at least the underperformance of our businesses. I think we've, we've got to make smart use of how we're spending our money, and we need to look at every department and to task that department head with saving money where they can to make sure that the county can continue to produce the same amount of quality of life to each and every citizen that we have here in Pasco County with, even with the budget shortfall that we're facing. And I think that there are certain areas of Pasco County that are needing additional attention, and I think that a tactic of controlling growth without infringing upon the rights of the property owners and land developers is an appropriate action to look towards so that everybody can win in the situation and our development can, or revitalization in some areas can occur.
Great, thank you. Let's talk transportation. There's been a lot of discussion on merging MPOs and creating a regional planning group. As you know, MPOs are federally mandated authority that plans transportation projects. What are your thoughts on merging our region's MPOs? Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Bradford.
I knew I was going to get that first. MPOs, and I got a lot of mixed, mixed feelings about this. I don't particularly want to give up control of Pasco County to a regional authority. However, you know, we have regional transportation issues that I believe will require regional solutions. I don't think they're all regional solutions, but I do believe there's a component of that. I don't think it's all or nothing at all. I'll give you an example. The veterans, it's now called the Sun Coast, that's a regional transportation road. When they built that road, if you recall, and search your memory banks, everybody was complaining it was a road to nowhere, if you recall that. And now it runs right through the spine of District Four, and as it goes farther north at 54, hopefully, that area there will, or Moffett Cancer is going to build, we can turn that into a hub of medical research, medical offices, and all the support services and medical manufacturing that goes along with that. So the transportation serves the creation of jobs. That's what it's all about. Transportation is, it has to serve a purpose. The purpose is to get from point A to point B in the less amount of time and the most efficient with the less fuel or the most efficient. That's why we, we just don't build roads to build roads.
Great.
But the verdict is still out on MPOs. I'm not going to commit to an MPO, but I certainly am very, very interested in it, and the devil is in the details on MPOs, I think, so far. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller, what are your thoughts on merging our region's MPOs?
Well, I could pretty much mirror just what Gary Bradford just said with one additional caveat. I do think that it is a, is something that is going to need serious consideration, at least where it comes to implementing technologies into our current traffic systems. So when we're looking at the, the cost of putting in, whether it be 5G or whatever the transportation situation is going to be with the future technologies that are coming into play, I think those need to work together in the Tampa Bay region, and I think that it would be appropriate in that aspect. But again, with the, with mirroring what Gary had said, that I do think the devil's in the details.
Great, thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick, your view on MPO merger?
I think talking about the MPO merger, it's really important that we do have our statistical data and everything so we can find out where we need to have and implement the new roads and have all the transportation. We do, if we can get more people to use the Pasco County Public Transportation System or Carpool or things like that, it's going to lessen the traffic on the roads. So again, I know everyone's saying the same thing, so just working together to make sure that we have as smooth transportation as possible in our community and in our county. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. And on the budget, a key duty of county commissioners is to construct, approve, and implement a budget. What one area of county services would you feel needs additional resources? And should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? And we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Miller.
All right, well, the, the one area that I think should be protected is where we're, we're replacing our infrastructure with new infrastructure. I think the, our water supply, we have issues that we've, we've had people that have, are just have terrible water systems. And I think that we do need to continue that. Could become a health issue in the future. And it's also something that just, the further you kick that can down the road, the more costly it becomes. Repairs versus replacement eat up a lot of budget, and they never come in a timely manner. They're just there when you want them, or when they happen, I should say. So I think that the, that budget should not only be protected, but also should, we should look at increasing their budget and expediting that whole process. We have the same issues going on with the flooding, and as, that can become very, very costly to a community, and it can be fixed. It isn't an impossible impossibility. So I think things that are going to save us from these big, huge expenditures, or the citizens of Pasco County, and with our insurance rates, those should be issues that we set up as a priority.
Great, thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick, what do you?
There's a few, there's a couple of them. Mental health and homelessness, if we can help redirect our mental health crisis that we do have here in Pasco County, and so
and so as many weren't as homeless as possible finding the underlying area, we can help them become productive members of society by helping them get back up on their feet, get them into career source or job connections or any of the resources that we have in Pasco. And then I know Pasco County has a new program to help constituents get back into the workforce program. So helping the mental health and homelessness, again, that's going to trickle back down to family values. If the kids see their parents working hard and being dedicated, then they can grow up with those values as well. Of course, business development, we have to make sure our economy and everything stays intact, especially due to COVID right now. We don't need any more businesses going out of business due to COVID, so we need to make sure we're able to help our businesses stay in business. Of course, we have the flooding, and some of that is being addressed, but we still have to make sure, helping Gulf Harbors, I think in Beacon Woods and different areas, we need to make sure the flooding is addressed. And then lastly is public safety. We don't want any budget cuts in that area because we need to make sure they have the proper equipment, the training, and also you've got to make sure they have the proper salaries so they aren't leaving our county to go to other counties. Thank you.
Great. And Mr. Bradford on the budget?
Budget, that's my forte. I go through every line of budgets, even my wife's budget. She didn't like that at all. But I would tell you, the county budget, there's one area that I would not decrease in any way whatsoever, and that is public safety. I think right now, public safety has to be funded at its present level in Pasco County. You cannot have the type of future that we want in Pasco County unless everybody is safe. That's the first thought on the budget. There are many things in the budget I think that we can take a look at. I do believe, I'll give you one example, I think it's an issue of fairness. On the west side, I don't think when it rains during the summer, excuse me, and you have a summer thunderstorm, that that should become a nightmare for a community. When it rains over there in some neighborhoods, that's exactly what it becomes. I think we have to be responsible. We have to develop and have an effective stormwater diversion projects. I think a lot of that, we have to work with the state and our federal partners because Pasco County does not have the budget to take care of these huge flooding issues that the can has been kicked down the road year after year, commission after commission. We've got to fix this. I mean, just think, Ridge Road took 20 years to get done. How many presidents, Democrat, Republican, congressmen? I mean, come on, 20 years to build a road? I think we can do a lot better, and I think we need to do a lot better because it is a fairness to neighborhoods that might not have the economic advantages that other neighborhoods do. The last thing I'd like to bring up about the economy is how to pay for it, how to get some more money. And I am not a tax guy at all. However, there is a situation that I think everyone needs to look at. I live in Vexley. It is a master plan unit development community. So when Newman, Newland out of California applies and they want to build this community that I live in, they start with the houses, they start with the apartment complexes. They want to increase the revenue, right? They want to put some money in the bank. Then they have like commercial, usually out front. In this particular case, it's a hospital, not a full-fledged hospital, but a hospital and racetrack. And then there's some pads of undeveloped land that was for commercial. So what a developer does is as he develops or she develops, the land price goes up. It becomes more expensive. It becomes more valuable. So then when it gets to the last component in terms of commercial, some of our friends in the development community come back to the commission and go, let's rezone that and put houses in there, put residential units in there, because quite frankly, they make more profit. But you have to change the zoning to do that. That's our job. My point is keep it the way it is. That creates jobs, that creates taxes, and also shuts the door on this revolving bedroom community syndrome that we have. We've got to create the jobs here. There's a lot of things in the statutes and the codes that we can do better, but it's going to take the ability to sit down with our partners and go, this is what we approved, this is what we expect. But have enough flexibility at least to listen. I think you've got to be a great listener. You've got two eyes, two ears, and one mouth, and that's the life of doing it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's talk equity. Can you name one issue in Pasco County that directly impacts or is directly impacted by racial inequity? And explain how the county can incorporate an equity framework in addressing this current issue. Let's go ahead and start with Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Racial inequity? Okay. That's one I haven't been asked. Okay, so I believe, just like our Declaration of Independence, all men are created equal. There shouldn't be any racial disputes. When it comes with everything going on, I'm not sure I should talk about it, but if we listen to law enforcement, we wouldn't have as many issues going on, and everything happens in the community. You can look at the statistics, whatever racial ethnicity you are, there are out there, the statistics are the same. Well, no, not the same. But I just feel everyone's created equal, and there shouldn't be so much diversity with everything going on right now. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. And Mr. Bradford?
That's a good question. They're writing books about that right now.
Yes.
Racial inequity in Pasco County. First of all, does it exist? Answer is yes, it does. Where does it exist? I think it exists in jobs. I think it exists in housing. It might even exist in opportunity. However, if you provide an environment for somebody regardless of their ethnicity, that they can get a job, live in a decent home, fulfill their American dream, what they determine is their American dream. Not everybody wants a house with a white picket fence. Not everybody does. And the family unit right now, your family unit might be totally different than my unit. That's the complex society that we live in in America today. There are things that the county government can do, especially maybe awarding of contracts. And to my detriment, I bring that up, and I would have to revisit that with the county government. I know they have something there, but I don't know the percentages. I think you need to provide opportunities for the little guy or the guy who might not have a fair shot because where he was born to compete in the American dream. Not everybody has the ability to compete equally. You know, a big corporation will have more money. A little guy doesn't. And I get that. But I think we all need to have a level playing field in some areas now.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Miller?
Well, racial inequity is a super complex issue, obviously, because sometimes it's just a matter of perception. What somebody considers to be an inequity, others may not. And where some feel that they were deprived, somebody in that exact same situation can excel. But I think as a community and in a county, that we just need to provide a better education and more training opportunities. And I think that we can do that a lot through public-private partnerships and encouraging the private partners that we already have in the community to help with training people into a useful position and helping them with licensing, making them legal and set up structure and giving them value. And I think making race an issue is a mistake in itself because the more we talk about it, the more of an issue it becomes when, I think naturally, we all move towards. I mean, I don't know anybody who's a racist, not that they have never done or said anything that may have been able to be taken that way, but I think from when I was a kid until now, I just don't see it as being as big of an issue. But it seems like it's becoming a bigger issue, even though it's fewer and fewer people are even seeing color as an issue at all. So I just think it's more of just something that we need to just work on, bettering the county as a whole.
Great. Thank you. I want to tackle the question around housing. Housing affordability advocates show up in strong numbers to board county commission meetings, and they highlight some staggering numbers that suggest if we don't act now, we may have a housing crisis in our community. Do you think we have a housing affordability crisis? And if so, what policy measures should be in place to address it? Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Bradford.
Thank you for that question.
We are running a little bit late, so I'm going to ask everybody to kind of...
Be brief. Be brief and be seated. I got it. On the developer's side, they buy a piece of land. It takes them three to four years to develop it. That's just the land, infrastructure, put a building on it, they've got to turn a profit. That's on one side of the issue. The other side of the issue is how do you turn a profit for people without the government getting involved, which is called Section 8 and other situations like that right now? How do you incentivize people to build affordable housing? They have done some of that in Tampa. They've been successful to a certain degree in Tampa. I do believe that it's an issue that we will have to tackle in 2021. We cannot kick the can down the road like transportation and other issues. There has to be a solution there, but it also has to be tied to the capitalist system on people who own it have to make a profit. That's where I'm at.
All right. Great. Mr. Miller, do you think of the housing affordability crisis? And if so, what do we do?
Well, again, like most things, the rules that are passed have unintended consequences. So as a general contractor myself, I happen to know that affordable housing without subsidizing is a unicorn. It has to be subsidized. We've made contracting so expensive through the extra demands that are put on the industry, through regulations from, you know, the whole alphabet soup that's out there that just makes it more costly. I mean, your sewer systems, the electrical that comes in, wages, insurances that you have to carry. So all of these things, there is a holistic approach that we could take to this as this becomes an issue, but most of our issues with making housing affordable take place outside of our county lines. That being said, what we can do is to make housing as affordable as possible, we could set up a plan for affordable housing at the county level that then can be met by a developer so that the developer has a set target. This is what I have to do, instead of having to come in and try to figure it out and what the county will accept, what they'll allow, and we can make it a little bit easier for them to come in and turn that profit.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
We have federal, state, and local programs to help affordable with affordable housing. They used to have the ship funds. They have down payment assistance programs that will help pay with first-class and security. This will help with the homeless and everything like that. Also, when we talk about Section 8 housing, if we were going to allow all these people with Section 8 housing and let them go in houses and different communities, that's going to be, instead of building a Section 8 apartment complex, now we're going to be segregating. And if compared to if we take these Section 8 houses and spread them throughout the community, you're going to create a less inequality of everyone being together, and you're not segregating the population. Because once you're doing this, if you're creating an apartment complex for Section 8 housing, now you're segregating all these kids. These kids are growing up in Section 8 housing. They're seeing how Section 8 lives, and they're just repeating the cycle. So letting them space out, let them see how other people live, give them the opportunity to have growth. Also, with people buying new houses, the interest rates are very low right now, so there are opportunities out there for affordable housing. And I know the Pasco County Housing Authority, there's over 2,000 units right now, so there's a lot of opportunities out there for people to own houses. They just need to be connected with the proper resources. Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk about healthcare. How can Pasco County improve mental health services in our community? And I'm going to go to Ms. Fitzpatrick first on that one.
With healthcare, and mental healthcare, there's so many areas that we can target right now. Of course, we have the Baker Act. And so for the Baker Act, if someone is suicidal, they would be Baker acted for up to three days. And then if you have the Marchman Act, if someone's so far off drugs and they need help, then you can Marchman Act them. So instead of creating these programs that are just revolving doors, have additional services. When they are released from the Baker Act, when they're released from the Marchman Act, give them the counseling services, give them treatment programs, do inpatient, outpatient. There's so many more opportunities out there. They have a six-day involuntary drug treatment program out there that not many people are aware of. Let's make some of these doctors in these programs accountable. So instead of having a revolving door, let's help them get to the next level so they can get the help. And I know with the mental health crisis, you have so many people out there in our community alone. We have one in three babies born with substance exposed in our area and surrounding areas. There are so many people that do want the help that if they go somewhere, they can't get the help that they need, so they'll go and they're like, oh, we don't have beds. Well, you don't have Medicaid. Oh, well, you don't have funding. You don't have this. You don't have that. So many people are turned away. We need to help address the issue and help stabilize them and get them back on their feet so they can be productive members of society. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradford, how could the county improve mental health services?
First, I think we need to tackle the stigma that's associated with mental health. We really need to do a better job, not only in county government, as a society, says, hey, look, mental health, chemical imbalances in the brain and all the related issues, there should not be a stigma for that. They deserve help. They deserve respect. They have dignity. Most homeless vets suffer from mental illness. I know. The biggest mental health facility in Pasco County, believe it or not, is Central Booking for the Sheriff's Office, because that's where they take people that no longer have the ability to function in society, and they have to, Baker Act or the March Act or something along those lines, that's where they take them. Why? Because we've had budget cuts in the past that have reduced those beds. Now, we do have some government services. I think we do a better job of promoting those, advertising those, partnering with those on the county level. I have no problem, as a city and county commissioner, looking at a nonprofit that deals with mental illness for homeless children, when they have a budget request that might be more than the previous year, I have no problem with looking at that because, especially the kids, they deserve a shot at the American dream. And I know everybody agrees with that, and everybody running for office agrees with that. We've just got to do a better job, and it's going to cost money, which reverts back to my original thing about the economy and keeping the train going down the tracks in Pasco County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Miller, improving mental health services?
Well, again, I'm going to go back to education. I believe that we should be... I don't... Well, again, I'm going to go back to education. I believe that we should be, I don't think that the sheriff should be our primary source of mental health. That's not what our sheriff's department is supposed to be there for. I mean, it's, it's great that they're stepping up. But honestly, they have other things to do that are probably more important than taking care of the mental health of our citizens. But I would like to see the county, I mean, I know we're heading into budget cuts, but we have existing facilities in the evening. And we do have private groups out there, charities, churches, that are willing to take on the role of counseling and helping people and, you know, just putting that in place for them to be able to do what they do and making it, you know, they can't afford to have the locations everywhere. And I think it's just a smart use of their money to spend it on the program itself. So what I would like to see is more of a, a relationship that is targeted towards the private sector to use county facilities for these types of meetings for AA, NA, and, you know, marriage counseling, maybe anger management, stuff like that.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, we have touched on several important policies here today. But before we wrap up, is there a priority you have that we haven't discussed, but will be a focus area for you during your campaign and on the board if elected? So we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Bradford.
Thank you. I appreciate that question. I think the, one of the issues that I will be focusing on is transparency and accountability of the county commission. Now, I am definitely not throwing stones at our city and county commission. I think they've done a good job. They all have expertise in some areas. But I know, and you know, in your business, that you always take a look on the next page that's being turned. What can you do better with the resources that you have? What's the attitude you can change? And I'll tell you one attitude that I think we need to change right now is to improve customer service attitude in government. I think that needs improvement. I don't think you get employees to do that by beating them over the head. I would use a team approach. County administrators are CEO, the board of county commissioners is the board of directors. You've got to know the, you got to know the chart. But I do believe showing appreciation and constructive criticism is best for our government. Because guess what? We all work, all of us work for the people who was there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miller?
Yes. All right. I, I would say that the, we have our budget crisis that we've got coming on, just through the, the lack of taxes and what have you. I know we touched on it a bit earlier when we were talking about budgets, but I, I think that we could look at how the county can use existing assets to generate income. I would, I would like to see us take an aggressive approach towards using this, even selling land that we'd have no use for, getting some of that off of the books. That's also because that comes with a maintenance component that costs money. Maybe look at using existing, like signs for advertising or this, you know, different buildings or fences and stuff like that where you can actually sell and generate some revenue. I would just like to, you know, sell towers on some of the county lands that they can get some revenue in from that and also increase our Wi-Fi capabilities, because I know we're having a higher demand for that, especially with the kids staying home from school. And I would, to one of Gary's points that, you know, I, we've seen some drastic improvement with the latest administrator on that county, with the attitudes of the, the people in the county administrative building. But yes, further training and people being able to treat their, the constituents of the county like a customer instead of like a, you know, a serf. When you walk in there and they're just throwing every reason at you why you can't do something, instead of sitting down with you and saying, hey, you can't do this, but how about you do this or this, and trying to work through the problem, instead of just throwing up roadblocks left and right. It was a, it was a very good valid point, and I agree with it and part of my platform. Thank you.
Okay, great. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, sure, sure. Is there a priority that you have that we haven't discussed yet, but will be a focus area for you during the campaign and during, and on the board if elected?
Well, we did address a lot of the issues, concerns today, the family values, transportation, economic growth, homelessness, flooding, public safety and mental health. Just going more in depth on those issues, making sure we continue to make sure we reach who we need to reach, make sure we get the proper services out to our constituents and our citizens, making sure they know all of the resources in the county. So if they need the help, they get the help they deserve so they can better their lives and their children's lives. Thank you.
Great, very good. Okay, final thing. We'd like to know how, where can voters go to learn more about you, your campaign and your position on issues that are most important to them? And let's go ahead with Ms. Fitzpatrick on that one.
They can go to fitzyforcc.com, F-I-T-Z-Y-F-O-R-C-C.com, or they can reach me at 727-834-9535. And lastly, on facebook.com/fitzyforcc.
Great, excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Miller?
So the best place, probably be to Facebook. I've got several videos on there that I've put and recordings of things. Also, the, honestly, the, the best place to get a complete answer because you try to keep those videos really short, just like we were, conversation today. I'm sure that all of us had points that we didn't get a touch on, probably on almost every topic. The other, I do have a website that is jeffmillerforpasco.com. And you can go there. But my phone number is the best way to reach me, and that is 727-364-7771. Have a good conversation then, and you can really get to the heart of an issue a lot better over a conversation.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Bradford, where can someone go to learn more about your campaign?
You can go gary@vogarybradford.com, or www.vogarybradford.com, or my phone number is 813 area code, 833-5931. And that rang this morning at 6:30 with a question that a guy got off a midnight shift with, and I woke up and answered. I do answer the phone still. So, again, again, thank you for putting this on. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thanks to all of you for being so, so accessible. And on behalf of our 1,400 members and our local board of directors here at the Tampa Bay Chamber, we want to thank you for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in an elective office. That concludes our candidate interview. Thank you.